For being here, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And today, the invocation will be by Pastor Thomas Powell from Calvary Church. Welcome.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you so much for this city, our city, Virginia Beach. We thank you for our mayor and for this council. And we thank you, Lord, for just the blessings that you put upon our city. So we pray for our children who go to school here, our people who live here, our military who serve here. Lord, we have a beautiful city, and your hand is upon it. Thank you for letting us be the place of first landing where we can be proud to be Americans. So, Lord, we ask you to bless and give wisdom to this council. And we ask, Lord, for your loving grace to continue to be upon our city. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. And now, will we please have a moment of silence in memory of all those who paid the ultimate price to keep our city and our nation safe? Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. And, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, all present.
Okay. I think Mrs. Henley's delayed.
I apologize. I didn't realize she was not in here. She must...
Okay.
Maybe she's just running a few minutes late. She did not let me know that she was leaving.
Okay, thank you. But we'll go ahead and get going at this point. Could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor, I see Councilmember Henley and Taylor coming in now. I can just take their verbal votes, if that's easier.
Okay.
Councilmember Taylor, this is for the certification of the closed session. Are you... Can you vote still? I can't see. We haven't opened the vote yet, so we'll let everybody vote electronically. Go ahead and open. The vote is open. Sorry.
Certification of closed.
Vice Mayor Wilson, I just need your vote, please. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to reset.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the informal and formal minutes of the informal and formal session of August 13, 2024? Informal and formal sessions, August 20, 20 and 24? And the formal session of August 27, 20 and 24?
Second.
Okay.
The vote is open. Councilmember Hutchison may have your vote. And Vice Mayor may have your vote.
Amanda, I need to vote for one and abstain on the other two.
Okay, you just can vote yes and then just verbally tell me that, okay? Thank you. Five... Well, you'll need to tell me specifically which ones. By a vote of 11 to 0, noting Councilmember Hutchison abstention for August 20 and 27, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved.
Okay, thank you. You know, this is a point where the council honors certain people that have some incredible things for going on. And we have a little bit of an add-on that is a continuation of an excellent report we got this afternoon. So if I can ask Maury Hill and Terri Stevens, Vice Chair of Zero Waste Awareness Week, to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. On behalf of the Virginia Beach Clean Community Commission, thank you for acknowledging the first full week of September as Zero Waste Awareness Week. Most Virginia Beach residents don't realize that the proposed waste management budget for 2425 is over $50 million. That is a lot of waste. We look forward to sharing with fellow citizens ideas towards zero waste, including composting food at home, recycling correctly, refusing, reducing, reusing, and rethinking to minimize waste. Educating our cities... Excuse me. Educating our citizens to be more mindful via an awareness campaign each September will help Virginia Beach reduce trash and landfills and save the city and residents on costs associated with waste disposal. We look forward to the opportunity and appreciate the continued support of City Council again this year in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And next, do we have Robert Jordan, Representative of Vets for NRF and Chief Warner Officer, the United States Navy Retired, pastor and author, and Jas Cannon spokesman? Are they present here today? Please come up. You know, this is a special thanks. You know, we are... Virginia Beach is a city of heroes and a nation of heroes. And we like to honor those who have served and continue to serve and have served very nobly for so many years and so many confrontations that our country has been involved in. And therefore, it's my pleasure... Whereas Ahmed Shah Massad is recognized as a national hero of Afghanistan for his major contributions towards securing an independent Afghanistan. And whereas Ahmed Shah Massad was the founding father of the resistance against the Soviet Union invasion in the 1980s and then against the Taliban, Al Qaeda, in the 1990s. And whereas Ahmed Shah Massad's unrivaled devotion to his people and country allows his legacy to live on after he was assassinated by Al Qaeda two days prior to the infamous September 11, 2001 attacks. And whereas Ahmed Shah's Massad's aspiration for a free Afghanistan that is an ally to the United States of America and the free world lives in the National Resistance Front of Afghanistan, now led by his son, Commander Ahmed Massad. Whereas Ahmed Shah Massad courageously defended the ideals of freedom, democracy, and human rights, which holds at even greater significance today, our world confronts unprecedented threats to these very values. And whereas Ahmed Shah Massad inspired the formation of Vets for NRF, a U.S. veteran organization supporting the National Resistance Front, which strives to improve relationships between Afghanistan and the United States of America. Therefore, I, with the authority vested with me, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, hereby proclaim September 3, 2024, Massad Day. In the day of Virginia Beach, I encourage all residents to stand by in solidarity with freedom-loving people of Afghanistan and provide hope to those in need. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this honor. My name is Jas Cannon, and I am an Afghan-American and a spokesperson for Vets for NRF. And I'll be reading from this letter. "Mr. Mayor, Your Excellencies, last week, the terrorist group Taliban issued a new decree which bans the women of Afghanistan from speaking in public. That's 20 million women who, as of right now, have no right to speak, go to school, or work because of the Taliban group. Now, what better way to rebuke the terrorist group than for an Afghan woman to stand here before you and publicly say no to the Taliban? That's why I decided not to speak myself and instead ask my colleague, an Afghan woman, to address you and to receive the Masood Day proclamation. Councilmembers, let me tell you why Masood... who Masood was and why this Masood Day proclamation is important. Twenty-three years ago, Masood was leading the resistance against all terrorist groups in Afghanistan. During his battles, he came across information that Al Qaeda was planning a major attack outside Afghanistan. Masood went to the European Parliament and warned the world that Al Qaeda was planning to attack America. On September 9, 2001, Masood was assassinated by Al Qaeda. Two days later, America was struck in the horrific attacks of September 11. Today, Al Qaeda and Taliban are back in Afghanistan, and they're planning more attacks. But millions of Afghans are fighting to stop them. They are supported by thousands of American veterans of the Afghan War, and I lead the organization of veterans. On behalf of the leader of the National Resistance Front, Commander Masood, and on behalf of the last president of Afghanistan, Mr. Saleh, I proudly accept the Masood Day proclamation. I will deliver this document to the 40 million freedom-loving people of Afghanistan who thank you for declaring September 9, 2024, as Masood Day. Signed, Legend, Leader of Vets for NRF. Thank you very much."
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you so much for this honor and privilege. On behalf of Legend, who is an Afghan-American, a U.S. Army veteran and combat veteran in Brother in Arms, I've served five tours of duty in Afghanistan, and I know Legend very, very well. It is a distinct honor that you've bestowed upon us today. And I know Legend, who was unable to attend because of his duties with Vets for NRF, always on the move and always working to secure a better way for the Afghan people, at great risk to himself, in support of the organization and in support of the Afghan people. Vets for NRF is a very, very important organization, which strives to work on behalf of not only the veterans of the Afghan War, but also the Afghan people. And I want to thank you personally, from my brother, Legend, on behalf of the organization, thank you so much for this very prestigious award today and proclamation. So thank you all.
And thank you for... and your colleagues that serve us to our great nation. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. And next, we have Patty Furco here. Oh, yeah, come on up. All of you. And this is going to be a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And we are all very acutely aware of the need to treat cancer, but also to take those methods to prevent it. And so I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Wilson if she would kindly read this.
Thank you. Patty, it's so good to see you. It's been a while. Absolutely. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. And whereas 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday. And whereas 46 children per day, or 16,790 children per year, are diagnosed with cancer in the U.S. And whereas 80% of childhood cancer patients are diagnosed late and with metastatic disease. And whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatments, toxicity, with 1/4 being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas in the last 30 years, only six new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specifically treat children and childhood cancer. And whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the American Childhood Cancer Organization, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of childhood cancer and the associated need for increased funding to carry this out. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. And whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness to find a cure. Now, therefore, I, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, hereby proclaim September 2024 is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. In Virginia Beach, I call upon all citizens to observe Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community across the country. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the official sale of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, to be affixed this third day of September 2024.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your all very hard work and dedication to a very noble cause. Okay, before we get to the consent agenda, I understand we have a speaker. I will read the speaker policy. "I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that the comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, the speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative time of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items that have been signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil under discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all to strive for civility and respect." Madam Clerk, do we have any... One speaker?
Yes, Your Honor. Vic Nichols would like to speak on ordinance number one regarding the traffic calming.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. All I'd like to do tonight is to bring to the attention of the city attorney that when you read this, it says, person went to, and it gives a code, the Code of Virginia. Any person who operates a motor vehicle, scooters and other things that are not licensed, it is possible to get them to go faster than 25, and they can obviously do some damage. So I would like to see if, you know, suggest to the council that if you have your attorney investigate what a motor vehicle is and to make sure that unlicensed vehicles, scooters, any other kind of thing, that they can also have to follow these rules, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay. Consent agenda, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances and resolutions, J, number one is the ordinance to amend City Code Section 21-230, rate traffic calming. Number two is the ordinance to amend various federal grant programs administered by the Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. Number three is the ordinance to provide direction to the city manager regarding the partnership with the Virginia Aquarium Foundation and authorize a cost-share agreement to facilitate inspection contract, and that's with Council Lady Wooten abstaining. Number four is the ordinance to extend the date to satisfying the condition closing on 34 square feet, a portion of an unimproved right-of-way adjacentment to the rear of 31745th Street. Number five is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachment into a city-owned right-of-way known as Ocean View Avenue at the front of 4724 Ocean View Avenue, re-maintain an existing landscaping, planting, and with timber border, and that's in District 9. Number six is a resolution to approve the FY 2025 performance contract with the Commonwealth of Virginia and accept and appropriate $1,823,209 from the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2024-25 Human Services Operating Budget, rate mental health development and substance use disorders. Number seven is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Virginia Tourism Authority and accept and appropriate $100,000 donation from the authority to the FY 2024-25 Cultural Affairs Operating Budget, redevelop the Hampton Roads African American Heritage Trail Guide, and execute a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Hampton Roads African American Heritage Trail, Inc., rate the land and the development of the trails guide. Number eight is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $22,500 from the Virginia Department of Historic Resources and to the FY 2024-25 Planning and Community Development Operating Budget and authorize $25,000 grant match, rate update up to five National Register of Historic Places nominations. Number nine is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $4,280 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2024-25 Human Services Operating Budget and authorize a $1,412... excuse me, $1,412.40 local match, rate the project assistance and traditioning with from homelessness program. Number 10 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,500 from the Virginia Department of Forestry to the FY 2024-25 Parks and Recreation Operating Budget and authorize a $1,500 local match, rate Wesleyan Park Tiny Forest Project. Number 11 is the ordinance to carry forward and appropriate $6,463,792 into the FY 2024-25 Operating Budget, rate the purpose previously approved FY 2324. Number 12 is the ordinance to transfer $8,441,844 to Capital Project 10291 Operations Facilities Renovation and approve the modification of a construction contract with MEB General Contractors for Buildings 3, 11, and 33 to address the prospective change order limitations provided to Virginia Code Section 2.2-4309A1.
Open to a public hearing on planning?
And the only one we have there is number two, which is the Green Clean Holland LLC, ILP, and Alex Aslan. We are moving for that to be withdrawn. Move for approval.
Do I have a second? Any comments?
Yes, Mayor Dyer.
Thank you. In regard to number three, ordinance to provide direction to the city manager regarding partnership with the Virginia Aquarium and authorize cost-sharing agreement. Been a lot of confusion amongst the public, especially since July 18, when an article was written about the privatization being on hold. And in speaking with some of the individuals at the aquarium today, I wanted to articulate my support for the foundation while also being very clear with the public about what is taking place internally. Today, we did have a briefing for those that were unable to tune in, where we received an audit presentation that was only supported by three individuals to actually review an audit presentation that was only supported by three individuals to actually review the audit, and the recommendations, the key recommendations, were, number one, as also mentioned, and this is for the public, in this article that was printed, written, July 18th, the number one recommendation was to address low morale stemming from concerns about the future of the aquarium. City leadership should engage in transparent communication, and I want to stop there for the public. This entire process has been less than transparent. In fact, in July, when this meeting was called while we were in recess, one of the liaisons was asked by our mayor to not attend the meeting, and by doing so, in acquiescing to that request, that prevented the very public, the general public, from actually knowing the meeting was taking place, and the city council didn't know the meeting was taking place. And so I want you all to think about transparency, communication. This recommendation is calling for city leadership to engage in transparent communication, actively involve employees in strategic planning, and provide reassurance through clear, actionable steps that demonstrate a commitment to navigating challenges together. And although I will be supporting the foundation tonight, it's very hard to have confidence in our ability to move forward when for over a year, the foundation begged city council to not go in this direction. They pleaded with us to not go in this direction, and yet our liaisons ignored those pleas. We have it on the record where they told us their morale issues, and instead of listening and taking them at their word, we questioned if it was actually accurate. The number two recommendation is to address concerns about the longevity of the building. For those that have been unable to tune in because you're working, your jobs, you're taking care of your families, the city owns the building. The city owns the building, and yet we have not taken care of deferred maintenance. Leadership should proceed with obtaining a detailed assessment of the building's condition, outline any planned maintenance or upgrades, and ensure ongoing communication to reassure employees. So again, I want the general public to understand, two of the first, the first two recommendations are related to communication and the lack thereof amongst, on our side, the liaisons. This has been confusion, it has been disorder, it has been chaos, and for many, we've lost employees. And we went to the general public, we came to you a couple months ago, and we told you in June that our city manager had been directed to hire a subject matter expert. I want you to go to the documents. We hired a subject matter expert that was tasked to do the very things this ordinance is going to cover. And so you have to ask yourself, do you have the confidence in the staff and the foundation to work without a subject matter expert when we told you in June we were hiring RSNS as a subject matter expert? Does that make sense? And so we should support the aquarium, but recommendation three is to continue to annually appoint city council liaisons to the foundation. I'm asking all of those citizens out there, whether you live in District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, or 10, to watch this process, to be involved. This is our aquarium. This is not a political stunt. If you read the paper, it mentions that the delay was based on pressures politically. Ask those employees at the aquarium if this is political. Ask them if the miscommunication caused angst at the aquarium. And so today, I will be supporting the foundation's desire to do exactly what they asked us to do a year ago. Slow down and listen to their concerns. Slow down and collaborate with them, and we ignored them, and we went in a direction that today we are now trying to rewrite. And so this is going to be more money, this is going to be additional efforts from staff, and here's the uncomfortable part, liaison's role is to report back to council. Very poor communication, we didn't know these meetings were taking place, and it's very concerning as a council member duly elected in this city, in District 8, to not be made aware of meetings taking place, and the motivation seems to be we didn't want the public to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Amelia?
In reference to ordinance seven, I have a disclosure on file. I am one of the directors, but there's no salary involvement in any way, so just wanted to give you that disclosure. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Sabrina?
As it relates to ordinance three, just want to make sure that I'm restating that I have a letter on file, and I will be abstaining from that item.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting Councilmember Wooton's abstention on ordinance number three.
Okay, we're going to go to planning item K1, Thalia Plaza LLC for conditional zoning from B2 community business and R5D residential duplex districts to a conditional B4 mixed-use business district and variance to sections 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, rate redevelopment to partners and develop a four-story mixed-use building at 4317 Virginia Beach Boulevard and 2016 North Fur Avenue, District 4.
Mayor, we did not have anyone signed up, however, I believe this is the applicant's representative, if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of city council. My name is Chris Pakta. I'm a land use and zoning attorney here in Virginia Beach, and I'm with the law firm Wolcott Rivers and Gates. I represent the applicant in this case. It's a request for rezoning in subdivision areas, as the mayor alluded to. I'll keep the matter brief because I know perhaps there are some questions to be asked, but I did want to reiterate a couple of points on the application. It's a pleasure to have with me as well the principal of the company, Thalia Plaza LLC, Mohammed Jamie, and he has been working diligently with the staff, the city staff, who's done a fabulous job and extremely diligent, communicative throughout this entire process. He actually began with a planner who's no longer with the city, Jonathan Sanders, and continued all the way through, working with Michelle Coleman and Kathy Warren, Carrie Bookholt, the traffic engineers, Stormwater, every one of the staff has done a phenomenal job, worked very hard communicating and pushing back on some things and requesting some things with us, and it's been a wonderful and informative opportunity for my client in this project. As the mayor alluded to, this is a request for a mixed-use development, so there are two properties. The first one is adjacent to Virginia Beach Boulevard, and that's zoned B2, and then there's a property immediately behind that that's zoned R5D. They're both across the street from the Thalia Church there, and the proposal would be to combine those two properties contingent on a rezoning of them from B2 and R5D to conditional B4. So it's commercial in the front, B2, R5D residential just behind it, combining those two, making them a mixed-use development. The proposal is a four-floor or four-story building on the site, and it was a bit confusing at first, there were some clarifications made throughout the process because the first three floors will be retail at the bottom, so that's the commercial aspect of it. On the second and third floors is residential, those would be apartments, market-rate apartments, both on the second and third. And then on the fourth floor, some of which is enclosed, it'll be a rooftop amenity space, some enclosed recreation room and some storage, especially for HVAC and mechanical. So because part of that is enclosed, but less than half of it was seen by the professionals who looked at it initially as a three-story, more like a three and a quarter, three and a half story, so it lent to some confusion at the outset. And throughout the process, bringing it through Planning Commission, we had some wonderful communication with some adjacent property owners, pastor across the street, and remarking on how there would be some opportunities to partner with some other residents and businesses in the area, as well as the church, and being a really good resident and neighbor here. Planning Commission, as you noted, voted on this unanimously to recommend approval, and we've been working with staff on making a couple of minor modifications. There was a request from someone who owned some property down the road there for some increased measures of security and privacy. So we added a fence to the very significant landscaping buffer, but to the south there we added a fence, and then to the southeast there, another fence, basically anywhere it might be adjacent to or budding some residential development, additional measures of privacy and security. If you didn't know, at this site, there have been some issues with graffiti and some vandalism because it's on that main corridor there on Virginia Beach Boulevard, so there have been multiple times even in this application where we've been reached out to. Mr. Boils with Thalia Civic League has done a really good job in communicating to us when he's noticed or anyone else has noticed some graffiti on the building. So that way, we were able to contact the city, take that off, and my client said he thinks that maybe seven or eight times in the last five years, that's been the case. So this is a real opportunity to clean up some property, to propose something that, as the staff, as a planning commission, has commented, is a really beautiful project. It's going to provide an opportunity for both some walkability in the area, some transportation modes other than just vehicular, but also connecting two areas. So the staff recommended that we take a look at the suburban, in urban, and Pembroke SGA and Rosemont SGA, because this site is situated in such a way that it's about a half a mile in either direction from two SGAs, so it's a bit unique in that way, but they wanted to make sure that we were bringing together something that was cohesive, didn't stand out, that sort of brought two SGAs together in a sense, and complied with the comprehensive plan. And so the development, the proposal we came up with is this mixed-use development with retail on the bottom and lobby space, and then apartments that'll be market rate, so more attainable than maybe something that's further in town center that might rent for $4,000 or $5,000, something more attainable that might be $2,500 to $3,000, very similar to the amount that someone might pay for a mortgage down the same street. And so after going through Planning Commission, we came before council originally being scheduled, and then deferred for some additional time of community engagement, talking to some other stakeholders, and making sure we could get this plan into a place that we satisfied as many folks as we could, but also stayed true and consistent to the development that's been worked on and that had the recommendation of approval from both the staff and the Planning Commission. So I'll stand by for any questions or addressing any concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Ross Hammond.
I thank you for coming to us again, and this is a very unique project. I've met with some of the Thalia Civic Leagues and some of the residents, the stakeholders, gone over the property, and this is something that is needed, and I'm recommending it for approval tonight.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor Dyer comments?
Yes, Chris.
Attorney Pakta, thank you for the presentation. I live in District 8 across the street, and you said a few things that kind of piqued my interest tonight. Number one, can you tell the public how many crosswalks there are in this area? Because you said it's going to be pedestrian-friendly, it's going to be connective from Princess Anne High School, which is a high school and a Starbucks across the street. That's in the Pembroke SGA, is that correct?
That is in the Pembroke SGA, that's correct.
Moving east towards Discount Tire, Aldi, the location, just from your recollection, how many crosswalks are there across this four-lane, five-lanes, six-lanes Virginia Beach Boulevard?
I'd have to defer to Planning on that, no shortage, Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, sir. You mentioned the affordability, it's market rate. I did some research, and these are all going to be two-bedroom apartments?
That's correct.
All right. Right now, in that general corridor, there are about 40 properties for rent, the majority of them single-family homes, and there's not a two-bedroom renting for over $3,500 or even $3,000, much less a two-bedroom. Those homes are generally between $1,895 and $2,200, which is actually pretty steep for that type of home. So I just don't want the public to think that this is attainable housing, it's market rate, and the market rate, if we can have our housing, Patrick, maybe chime in at some point, for a two-bedroom in this city is not $4,000 right now, it's closer to about $1,700. So I just want to make sure we understand this is not pedestrian-friendly, it's actually a very high-traffic area. It's a residential area to the rear, a residential area, commercial across the street, and then to the east, the west, and the south. So I just want to make sure people don't think there's going to be these really affordable apartments coming into Thalia because it's cheaper to actually rent a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family home, but thank you.
If I may, Councilman Taylor?
Yes, sir.
I have the benefit of also doing residential real estate, and so I've done a number of closings in that area, and the mortgages in the last couple of years have been very consistent with what we're suggesting is a market rate rent here. But in addition to that, the, you know, the affordable housing ordinance is an interesting one, and it's a topic of a lot of discussion, and the workforce house element is a subset of that. And if my recollection is right, the number there is 80% to 120% of area median income, which 100% would be about $106,000. So this, these amounts that we're discussing is consistent with that, which is a subset of what's been deemed affordable housing, but discussed as attainable housing by some other folks. And so anyways, my client's trying to achieve something that at least can fit in there and can help some citizens who might not otherwise afford, you know, the west end or somewhere else in town center.
And I can, I concur, it's very difficult to get a mortgage right now with little income. And Mayor Dyer, I don't have any questions, any further questions for Mr. Pakta, but I do have a, the file mentioned there was one letter of opposition on file, the time of planning, but I did want to read something into the record, if that's okay, sir?
You sure can.
All right. This is from a local business owner in that corridor, and again, this, for the public, this does butt District 8, it's literally right across the street from Thalia Road, and it goes down. Dear city council members, this was written to us September 3rd. A major change to the character of the Thalia corridor is being attempted. There are no structures, no is capitalized, of this height along the stretch of Virginia Beach Boulevard. Imposition of a major zoning change needs thorough review and not a haphazard application. Photos at the bottom of this email show current characteristics of the area. Please stand for neighborhood protection, this is someone pleading with their council to just please protect their neighborhood. Please vote no to the proposed four-story apartment building along the entrance to Thalia area neighborhoods. Reject Thalia Plaza LLC's conditional rezoning and subdivision variance. My wife and I work on the next block at Thalia Professional Building and are members of Budding Property LLC on that same block. We live and own property in District 8. I want, because I heard many council members say, what is this, what's the reference to District 8, what does this have to do with you? Let's just roll with the council member. Many of the individuals that go to Dolmatt Chiropractic, many of the individuals that go to Gusson George's, use Tire Kingdom, shop at Aldi, actually live in District 8, and the traffic there is a major concern. Reasons to vote no. The lot is too small, less than half of what is required. I want you all to think about this as you go to ask for planning. The building is too small, four stories versus characteristic one-story office commercial buildings here. The structure overwhelms all other buildings in this stretch of the Boulevard. We even have our, fortunate to have our EMS over there, they don't have a four-story building. We're mostly one-story with some two-story. It is much too close to the Boulevard. It is not in accord with the character of the neighborhoods. High vehicular accident risk. Mr. Manager, a couple weeks, last week, we just had a safety plan that was rolled out, and we talked about pedestrian incidents, accidents, people getting hit by cars. The building we work in has been inches away from being hit, and I have seen vehicles leave the Boulevard and careen across the Willis Wayside lawn across the street. Intersection heavily utilized by EMS, that's the headquarters. Ambulance... Ambulance dispatch, launch, uses the intersection multiple times each day, I was stopped this weekend with a siren. Minimum number of parking spaces for design, additional parking will be needed, which neighbors' driveways will be blocked. There are too many significant variances. I mean, for the public, again, it's in between two SGAs, it's not in an SGA. Front yard setbacks, encroachment. Side yard setbacks, encroachment. Minimum lot width, not met. Minimum lot size, not met. 40,000 square feet required, lot has less than 20,000 square feet. Mr. Manager, if I get any of this wrong, please correct me. This property is not in a strategic growth area, though the developer has used the SGA excuse for the overbearing and grossly out-of-character design. Any project in the Thalia corridor should be designed to maintain the characteristics of the surrounding properties. That's important, because you did find it necessary, you wanted to reach out to the Thalia Civic League, because it was so important. This area is a gateway to neighborhoods, and any new development should adhere to the character of other properties along the corridor from Thalia Creek to Collins Square East. Current businesses are one- and two-story, with much larger setbacks from Virginia Beach Boulevard and much larger setbacks from the side streets. I was fortunate, Mr. Pockta, to work at Mark Gonzenhauser rugs and carpet when I was a child, when I was a teenager, off the street, not right up there lots of cars. Existing businesses have significant green space and landscaping. Businesses along the south side of the Boulevard are mainly single-story professional offices, chiropractor, several dentist offices, eye doctor, and a one-and-a-half-story law office. The north side businesses and offices are split between one-story and two-story structures. Most have large setbacks and sit at a significant distance from the street. Most have beautiful, beautiful green space, none encroach on or overwhelm the Boulevard. Traveling east on Virginia Beach Boulevard, you drive over Thalia Creek and enter the Thalia area, there are numerous trees, and existing businesses are beautifully framed by green spaces. Please stand for neighborhood protection. Please vote no to the proposed four-story apartment building along the entrance to Thalia area neighborhoods. And that's for the record. Mr. Dyer, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May I make a comment? And this is why, it was raining that day I went out to meet with the Thalia Civic Leagues, which was more than one person on this letter, and spoke to them. And after we went through all of these same kinds of questions, they realized, one of the first things I said to them, change is constant, and beauty is in the eye of the beholder. It is important that we move forward, we need these new development, we need some more unique things. And then I deferred it only because we still had one or two things, and we did address those. Therefore, I still stand on my decision to approve this building and this project. Thank you.
Mayor Dyer, just one correction. As of this minute today, the Thalia Civic League has retracted their support for this, because they were exhibited, they were given an exhibit that showed three stories, and Mr. Pockta did deal with that discrepancy, and they were never reapproached to be notified that it was four stories. So Dr. Ross Hammond, as of today, that support from Thalia Civic League, not one person in the entire Civic League, is off the table, but thank you.
Okay, and that's coming from you. But I did meet with those people, we did put up on their big board exactly, even the little part that's going to 44, where you have the HVAC and so forth, it's not the entire, it's only a third. And even that is 44, which is less than the regular fourth story. But our staff felt it was important to bring that up, and we went over all of that, including Mr. Boils was there. I only deferred it for this one part that you have addressed today. And therefore, I still move for approval, and will let the council make their decisions. Thank you.
Okay. Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Ross Hammond, you raised a good point, and you're our plan directors here, so I would just ask, Ms. Warren, typical height of a regular four-story building? What is that? And then I know we're dealing with 44 feet here on the front side, and then, what, 33 on the back?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And so a typical four-story, we calculated to be about 55, 55 feet.
55 feet.
Yes, and this is 44 and a half.
Okay. Mr. Pockta, can you describe a little bit? I know, you know, we've got the application and the right up in front of us here, but just what is going on on this, on this top floor, on the fourth floor? If there's an elevator, I'm assuming there's a box for the equipment up there and amenity space and whatnot, but there's no, there's no living quarters up there, right?
That's correct, there's no living quarters. And in fact, in the comprehensive plan, in the pattern book, the inland design of the comprehensive plan, there's a depiction of a four-story building, the kind of thing that's called for per the comp plan in this area, and that four-story building has residences all the way up. So on our plan, residences will only be to the third story, and on that fourth floor, I call it a floor, because most of it's not enclosed, and it's actually not a zoning ordinance that calls it a story or not a story, it's building code. And so if it's not enclosed, it's not a story. But nonetheless, there's some reasonable minds can disagree on that, and on that fourth floor, there will be rooftop amenity space.
Thank you. Okay, did we have a second on this? Okay, let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Can you close it? Close it. By a vote of eight to two, with Councilmember Wooton abstaining, this application has been approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to Diamond Pharoah Star Real Estate LLC for a conditional use permit, Ray Assembly at 4604 Pendrick Lake Circle, and that is District 9, it was deferred.
Ms. Pharoah is the applicant, if you'd like to come forward.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Good afternoon. I was here a bit ago, and I did want to say before you did your vote, I did do some research in myself. I spoke to Fire Inspection Hope, she sent me an email, the, I don't know if you all received it, it was closed out, no violations. I also called the police department, there was no report reported for any of those issues that, I think it was somebody said that somebody got hurt or anything of that nature. I did follow up to, you know, check into that information, and there was no police report, and then I do have the email from Fire Inspection Hope, as well as the closeout that there was no notice of violation. So that's basically all I had to say.
Okay. Mr. Schollman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Pharoah, thank you again. I'm sorry you have to come back now two times, and I appreciate you coming back. And, you know, just, just from my perspective, you know, since we, since we last saw one another a couple of weeks ago, I obviously had some concerns I expressed to you, and you, very well-taken concerns, and I appreciate that. Between then and now, I would have, I would have hoped to have heard from you in some way, shape, or form to address, or at least kind of quell or answer some of those concerns, and I haven't. I did share with you, and I hope you got through our planning department, the surveillance video that was taken from the neighboring property on August 16th, that Friday evening. Have you, have you had a chance to view that video?
Yes, I did review that video, as well as, you know, everything that was in the video. That's why I did reach out to the police department to see about any incidents or anything. Yes, I did see that kids were, you know, kind of out there. And like I said before, that is a condition that I don't mind having, I will not have teen events. It's something that took place for my daughter that kind of got way out of control. No one was hurt, thank God, and I just took it as a learning experience, that I wouldn't, I will not host those type of events. I will only have small gatherings, and I just hope you all can give me a chance to do that. I do have a really good plan that I put in place for my space, I put a lot of work into it. So I definitely hope that this one incident that I did have for my daughter doesn't, you know, kind of ruin everything for me, but I do understand.
And I very much want to support you. I mean, I'm a small business owner myself, and I commend you for, I mean, I commend anybody for getting out there, taking a risk and starting a business and, you know, making a go for it, you know. There, part of the video, and I'm not sure if you, you know, watched toward the very end, showed a young lady who's, so when you said nobody got hurt, there was a young lady whose arm was, was clearly either dislocated or broken, and that, that gave me, you know, cause for concern. There were more than just a few young people out there, there were, I mean, at least, I would say 50, and they were kind of in, into Pembroke Boulevard. There were voices audible that were, you know, talking about a fight. There was another voice that was directing some of the, some of the kids across the street to the Hardees, so that they could get picked up. So those were, those were concerning items to me. Also, I, in our packet of information, you mentioned there wasn't a police report, but I did reach out to the third precinct, and we do have, when you came a couple of weeks ago, you had mentioned that there, there was no security at this particular event. In the video that I sent over to you or had sent to you, and in the body cam from the, from the police, we can clearly see people wearing security t-shirts. So I just want to at least point that out to you. And then also included in the, in the information that we got was, you know, were copies of event flyers from dating back into June. So, so as far as, as far as the police department is aware, and now we're aware, that these events, unlicensed, unpermitted events, ticketed events, by the way, have been, have been going on since, since June. So, and there, our police chief is here, and our captain from the third precinct is here also, in case you or any other members of council have, have any, you know, have any questions or concerns. It does give me a little bit of concern, because when we talked a couple of weeks ago, you had mentioned that you were seeking an ABC license. So, so I just, I wanted to throw that out there to you as well, as another cause for concern. And really, all of this started with just hesitation on my part, because I'm familiar with that center, and I know the parking is tight. But, but when I started kind of looking into it a little bit further, it just gave me some other reasons to be concerned about it. And, and again, I really would love to support you, and I think it's commendable that, I mean, I wish you the best of luck, you know, in whatever you do. I just, for me today, this is not something I'm able to be comfortable with. So, and I hope you can understand that, and appreciate where I'm coming from.
Yes, that's understood. I did want to clear some things up that was said. I did speak to ABC in reference to licensing. They did tell me that, because not all events have ABC or anything as if, but they did tell me and give me the list of everything that they would have to do to get a day license if they were going to hold an event with alcoholic beverages. However, I have had things, like I had a grand opening, that was something I did there for me. I had several things that I did there for myself, small things, but I have not had any ticketed events there. In reference to the young lady's arm, my daughter knows her, nothing was wrong with her arm. Also, the police was out there if anything was wrong with her arm. It does look like in the video, something like her arm is dangling, however, it wasn't, and I was very concerned of that. Like I said, I definitely understand it was a lot of kids, but kids are not like adults, they don't make their own judgment, and they don't make their own choices. So once they heard party, it was party. They came from kind of all over the place, it was people that we didn't know. So I do, like I said, I definitely understand your concern in that issue, but that definitely won't happen again.
Mayor Dyer?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Ms. Starr, for coming back. I too am concerned about what's going to happen to you tonight, and I'm concerned with the consistency in this body, too. I'm just going to go out there and say it, because I went back and reviewed the STR applications. You know what STR is?
No, I don't.
Short-term rental.
Okay.
And just like Councilman Schollman has said, there was some images of your promotion, and I asked you last time to be forthright, if you did it, you did it, you're telling me you didn't, but there are some images of your address promoting ticketed events on social media. So that is what it is. But in the same vein, we had clear evidence of short-term rental users who didn't have permission, marketing their short-term rental units, and we still approve those. I'm concerned here, because as you just saw, the last application, we want to lean on planning, we want to lean on departments, and I want to read this again to the public, because if it's good for STRs, if it's good for one citizen to break the rules, to not know what's going on, and this body's going to approve, and there's multiple instances, I just want to read to you that the shopping center is actually deficient in nine spaces, doesn't have enough parking whether you do your events or not, never heard a peep. And I drove past on Sunday, loved going to church, packed to the brim. It says, "To accommodate parking on site, staff recommends that events be limited to off-peak hours and weekends." It doesn't say deny. ABC license is not germane to this conversation, whether you get one or not. You said your daughter's friend didn't have an injury, the police report didn't say there were any injuries. And Chief Newtigan, if you want to come up, the police report I read didn't specifically say there were any injuries as a result of you opening your door, having a big party, and then someone getting injured. So all that, you throw that out the window, too, ma'am. You were actually recommended for approval from our planning department. So what you're going to see here tonight, Ms. Starr, is political theater, probably not going to pass, and that's just how it works within political bodies. But it's not because the planning department wants to approve you, it's not because you've done your best, it's not because you had a party that got out of control, and you should take accountability for that and responsibility. It's not because anyone was harmed that night, it's because there is this perception that all those people out there that night were causing a raucous. And again, the police report, no injuries as a result of you opening your door. I would advise you in the city of Virginia Beach, if you're going to do business, though, be compliant, because you can't have the fire department come out, which they did, and you're aware, we didn't talk about this last time, and they said that you were beyond, you had beyond the number of people. And so I just want to prepare you. We will be voting. I wish you the best. Our planning department, our professional staff, who we just leaned on, and we leaned on, said they wanted to support you. And again, look up the STRs, we've approved at least a handful, I got big hands, at least a handful, and they were breaking the rules, they were advertising on VRBO and all the sites, making money, not paying taxes, not being compliant, and guess what we did on this council? We approved them. And so you leave tonight with your head up, but as a result of the fire issue and some of the things, I'm not going to support this going forward, but it's not because you're not hardworking, it's not because you didn't try, but unfortunately, you have come to a political body. God bless you, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else at this point? Sabrina?
Sure. And I wanted to just say thank you to Councilman Schollman for certainly understanding my request to defer this until we could have more understanding about the totality of circumstances as it relates to this item. And so that was important for me, because I want to make sure that, you know, looking at the information, that I do no harm to our community and to our business owners, because it's, it's very important that folks who want to do business in the city of Virginia Beach are able to do so by the same guidelines as anyone else. And, you know, I certainly did have a chance to go out to the location, and I did talk to some of your neighbors. And the interesting thing to me is, they, you know, they said to me, hey, we do certainly understand the circumstances that happened, we know about the incidents, and we would suggest that she adhere to a limited capacity, have security, and implement a parking plan, because, you know, parking certainly is, is limited there. But... But they never said, "Listen, we don't want this facility. We don't want her doing business." They say, "Listen, we want everyone to succeed." And I thought that was admirable. And so just listening to those concerns. But then also, I also have to look at other information as it relates to the video I saw and the document that's in our packet that talks about the police coming out. And I think in one instance, it talked about alcohol being involved, and so many different things happening even before you get to the point of approval. And that's unfortunate, and it's difficult to really see that. And certainly am conflicted because I support business owners, and I want to see them succeed. But certainly, at the same time, I have to look at all the information. I have to look at all the details and the evidence. And as I mentioned, I want to make sure that whatever decision I make, that I'm not doing any harm to the business owner or our community. And so I appreciate you certainly coming forward and submitting your application. But even today, I also heard from our staff that there were incidents that happened prior to approval. And I understand some of the incidents with the STRs as well. I don't agree with that either. But unfortunately, these are the set of facts and information that we have. And certainly have to make a decision based on that. And that's the totality of the circumstances. But I do... My question earlier was to make sure if this was not approved, if the permit was not approved, would you still be able to do business in the capacity that you are in now? And it's my understanding that you can. You just cannot have events in that location without an approved permit. And so that's also information that's helpful to me. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else at this point?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we deny this application. But I wish you the best, the very best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, let's open the vote. Motion to deny.
The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 0, with Councilmember Taylor abstaining, you have denied this application. Councilmember Taylor, I don't have a letter on file for you. If you can state for the record why.
Double standard. Thank you. Okay, at this point, if we can move on to appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the Act of Transportation Advisory Committee to appoint Kathryn Seibauer, the Advertising Advisory Committee to appoint Sanjay Patel, the Arts and Humanities Commission to appoint Christopher Booner, Green Ribbon Committee to appoint James Reedy, and to reappoint Roy Flanagan, Chris Freeman, Albert Henley... Barbara Henley, that one's questionable. Harold Jones, and Emily Steinhalber. The Historic Review Board to reappoint Steve McNaughton, Richard Poole, James Bacon. The Historic Preservation Commission to appoint Florence Reese and Vincent Lyons. Human Rights Commission to appoint Malusha Carla Marino Legara... No, Cigara, excuse me, Cigara. Public Library Board to appoint Shay DeBerry and Open Space Jenny Perry. Move for approval.
Okay. Okay, votes open.
Councilmember Hudsonson, may I have your vote, please? Oh, he stepped out. I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. So we'll close, we'll mark him absent for this vote. By a vote of 10 to 0, you've approved those as read by Vice Mayor Wells.
Okay, any unfinished business? New business? Okay, we're going to adjourn into open mic.